Okay, if we could have everyone please take their seats. We want to get started right on time this evening. We have a lot to cover. I'll go ahead and call to order the meeting, the special meeting for the Gilbert Town Council December 13th, 2022. If I could please have a roll call, Judy?
Mayor Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Amy Yentes?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks? Councilmember Young Kaprowski?
Here.
Councilmember Scott September?
Here.
And Councilmember Kathy Tilke?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you, Judy. I'm going to go up to the hand mic now. The first item on this evening's agenda is to recognize Amy Yentes for her year of service as the vice mayor. Amy, if you could come down and join me, please? We have certificate of appreciation for Amy Yentes. As mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Amy Yentes for serving as vice mayor for the town in 2022. Vice Mayor Amy Yentes carried out the duties of the office of vice mayor honoring the public trust in representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and leadership. Let's take a picture. You're welcome. It's even better with you. Don't move. So as your appreciation as vice mayor, we have this Parker pen for you that says Vice Mayor Yentes on it.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. And then item number two, don't move, Amy Yentes, because it is to consider adoption of a resolution of appreciation for Councilmember Amy Yentes for her time serving as a Gilbert council member. Now, let me explain to everybody here, we chose to do these awards this evening as it's our last meeting here for 2022, our last meeting in this public safety training facility before we move back to our old new chambers because they look so different. And to make it a little easier on you too, my friend, because I know how much you love the attention and the spotlight. So I will, I will attempt to read this. A resolution of the common council of the town of Gilbert, Arizona honoring Councilmember Amy Yentes for her service to the citizens of Gilbert during her term of office, whereas Amy Yentes has served as a council member since January 2019, including the appointment by council as the vice mayor in 2022, and whereas Amy Yentes served as council liaison to numerous boards and commissions providing a crucial link between citizen advisory boards and the council, and whereas Amy Yentes advocated for sound economic policies at the local and state level, and whereas she has exercised careful consideration when evaluating policies and budget items before council before reaching a decision, and whereas she has carried out the duties of public office honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and courageous leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Gilbert, that the town council on behalf of the citizens of the town of Gilbert hereby express sincere appreciation to Amy Yentes for her service to the town as a member of the council. Now, do we need to have a vote on that part? Okay. Can I have a motion to pass and adopt by the common council of the town of Gilbert this resolution on this date in December 2022?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Councilmember September and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Please vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Passed this day and adopted. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
And thank you. Do you want to get a picture with this too? She's just going to want a picture with this too. And we have a gift for you for serving as a council member, which is this handy dandy journal with your initials on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And now you see you can use your pen with your, hey, let me get the pen. We'll do a photo. Yeah, of course.
Okay, Mayor Peterson is right. This is probably my least favorite part of the job, is the public attention, but I, I do want to take a minute and recognize my family and, ooh, you might want to get an antibiotic wipe on that, antibacterial. For the past four years, and just to give context of people who are here, not that they care, but I'm going to do it anyway. When I, when I was first elected four years ago, hey babe, hold this. When I was first elected four years ago, prior to taking office, I got married. I inherited this wonderful daughter Chloe. And then over the past four years, we had our daughter Ivy and daughter Hazel. So it's been a really wild and hectic time for our family, but through that, and now they're just going to run amok, so I don't know what to do about that. Through that time, it really has been my honor and privilege to serve the community. The reason I got into this was, was to uphold the public trust. That was really a nicely written proclamation, very appreciative, but as, as well as be a good financial steward of taxpayer money. So for whatever degree I accomplished that or provided any value whatsoever, I'm grateful for the experience, but most of all just want to briefly say thank you to my family because you put up with this. And thank you, thank you, Mayor, for, for your support.
One more certificate of appreciation for you too.
They all have expiration dates.
This certificate, right, is proudly awarded to Vice Mayor Amy Yentes for your efforts in serving Gilbert residents since 2019. We appreciate you, Amy. Thank you. And you're right, your life has changed a lot since you were running for office. Okay, that's okay. I want to take those off her. There we go. Next up, I would like to ask Councilmember Scott September to please join me in the front here. Basically going to do the same exact thing for you, Scott?
I'm not going to have to read anything, am I?
No. Take your glasses off. I just have to hold it out here so I can read it. I also want to point out that these members of the council are still council members until the inauguration on January 10th at 6:30 PM. Vice Mariyentes will remain Vice Mariyentes. Councilmember September will remain Councilmember September, and Councilmember Hendricks will remain Councilmember Hendricks unless someone else decides to do, to resign or other, other things.
Before you read that, can I call the pastors down?
This isn't for that. This is for you.
Oh, there's something else? Oh.
This is for you, my friend.
Oh, okay, great.
A resolution of the common council of the town of Gilbert, Arizona honoring Councilmember Scott September for his service to the citizens of Gilbert during his term of office. Whereas Scott September was appointed to the town council in April 2020, to my council seat because I resigned, and has served as a town council member, and whereas he believes it is an important, is it important to preserve the appearance and feel of our community and has always fostered thoughtful dialogue, discretion, and decision making that engages the cares and concerns of Gilbert stakeholders. And whereas Scott September served as council liaison to numerous boards and commissions providing a crucial link between citizen advisory boards and the council, and whereas Scott September's voluntary and noble efforts to prevent human trafficking with intervention and disruption of human trafficking syndicates while providing resources to and the support for victims of human trafficking are for the betterment of Gilbert and Arizona's community. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council on behalf of the citizens of the town of Gilbert hereby express sincere appreciation to Scott September for his service to the town as a member of the town council. Can I please get a motion to pass and adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Tilke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Passed and adopted by the common council of the town of Gilbert, Arizona this 13th day of December 2022.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Do you want to get a photo? This is also a certificate of appreciation. This certif, this certificate is proudly awarded to Councilmember Scott September for your efforts in serving Gilbert residents since 2020.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. But wait, there's more. You too get a beautiful journal with your initials. S.S. Scott September.
No, no, not here tonight. But I would like to maybe say a word?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. It has been, it has been a humbling honor to serve the town and especially to serve with such great people. The staff we have here at the town of Gilbert from the top down are committed, experienced professionals dedicated to serving this community, and it has been an honor to work with them. I want to thank especially Patrick Banger for bringing a, a culture that, that promotes that, that level of service and for a culture that always seeks to do more with less. I want to thank my, my council peers and the mayor. I've learned something from each and every one of you. And most of all, I want to thank my, my family for letting me have this time to serve. And I want to thank my wife who supported me through all of this. If she had any idea what, what it was going to mean, I'm sure she would never have let me done this. And I'm just very grateful to have had this experience. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. Next on our agenda, we have recognition of Councilmember Hendricks, but he has not logged on yet. I was going to pass this to Councilmember Anderson because you were acting mayor when Councilmember Hendricks came on. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. I wish he was tuned in. A couple of quick stories about Lauren. He sits next to me down here and we trade barbs every once in a while. But I have to, to reward Lauren for being the most smartly dressed council member through his term. You, you may have noticed he's got some thing about wearing ties and I managed to challenge him one night that I would go without a tie if he wore a tie. He did. So I know that Lauren owns a tie and he can get dressed up when he needs to. The other thing is a quick, short story. I know how much he enjoyed our council meetings too, especially when he was sitting on a beach. When we had a, a council meeting one night, he was absent. And as we were going through taking, doing our business, I got a text message from Lauren that said, this is really difficult to stay awake through all of this while I'm watching the waves come into the shoreline. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you for everything that you've done. We appreciate your service and we know that he's going to go on and do some great things with the state legislature now. So thank you again for your service, Lauren.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. We do have to have a motion to pass the resolution on behalf of Councilmember Hendricks, whereas Lauren Hendricks was elected to Gilbert Town Council in August 2020, and whereas Lauren Hendricks has been a passionate advocate for fiscally responsible and sustainable government, and whereas he has fostered transparent public dialogue and thoughtful questions and debates, and whereas he has served as a council liaison on a board and commission to provide a crucial link between citizen advisory boards and the council, and whereas Lauren Hendricks has carried out his duties of public office and represented the citizens of Gilbert with leadership, and now therefore be it resolved that the town council on behalf of the citizens of the town of Gilbert hereby express sincere appreciation to Lauren Hendricks for his service to the town as a member of the council. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mariyentes, a second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, passed and adopted by the common council of the town of Gilbert, Arizona this 13th day of December 2022. Now I'd like to invite Councilmember September back to join me. This is what you thought you were coming down here for. So I have a, would you like to invite your guests down, please?
Sure, please. So I'd like to invite the pastors and, and our neighboring council member Mark Stewart from Chandler to come down and join us for the reading of this proclamation. Come over here to the, to your right and you can, you can come down the stairs over there.
Thank you, Scott. As our friends are coming down to join us, I'll start reading this proclamation. It's for Anti-Human Trafficking Month, whereas human trafficking is a global plague that impacts millions of people each year, including tens of thousands of Americans, and whereas the United States ranks as one of the worst countries globally for human trafficking, and whereas Arizona ranks in the top 15 states with the highest rates of human trafficking per capita, and whereas human trafficking impacts people across all demographics and ages, including teenagers and children, and whereas the battle against human trafficking includes supporting efforts in schools, churches, nonprofits, law enforcement, and businesses to prevent human trafficking, intervene, disrupt, and dismantle human trafficking syndicates, and provide resources to and support for victims of human trafficking. Whereas the town of Gilbert joins schools, churches, nonprofits, organizations, law enforcement, federal and state coalitions, and the NotInOurCity.org movement in our commitment to increase public awareness of the human trafficking epidemic that impacts our community, state, nation, and world. Now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 as Anti-Human Trafficking Month in Gilbert, Arizona, and urge our residents, churches, schools to work together to eliminate trafficking from our community and support the efforts of frontline organizations and law enforcement in their battle against human trafficking and to take a stand and say, "Not in our city."
Thank you, Mayor. When I became a council member, I became aware of this issue. It's a very dark issue and this, this Not in Our City movement and the Night of Hope V, the fifth year that, that the Night of Hope has been taking place in January is going to, is shining a light into this dark place in our community. And, and the trafficking of our children, the exploitation of human beings, it's not happening just in other cities, it happens here too. And it's important that everybody is aware of this and please, I want to invite everybody. We have pastors here from, from the valley, from the east valley here joining us tonight as part of the Not in Our City movement. The Super Bowl is going to be in, in February and there's going to be Night of Hope V, and the Not in, Not in Our City movement is going to culminate on February 10th, Friday at 6:00 PM at the Gammage Auditorium in Tempe. I want to invite all of you to be there. And I also want to invite you to go to NotInOurCity.org, take the pledge, and take a stand against trafficking. And I'd like to present this to, to Pastor Mike Gallin of Bethel Church, this proclamation. This is, Gilbert is the first jurisdiction in the state of Arizona to make this proclamation. I want to thank our, our town attorney for drafting it. And there are other cities that are planning on signing this proclamation and taking this stand with us. This is already being agendaized, but we're hoping to get as many seats as we can in, in 100 churches to join to, that this is a, a complete valley event. You know, there's a lot of things that divide us today, but this is something that we can all stand behind together, arm in arm, against human trafficking. So thank you, Pastor Mike. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I just want to say thank you. You are a forerunner in, in this and we're hoping Not in Our City, Patrick, thank you, man, will take this stand. I, I think we can unite together that this should not happen in any city. And the city of Gilbert is taking that stand to make that proclamation and believe that others are going to follow. And, and yes, if you're here and you, you don't know if your church is participating, please get on your pastor and say, we, we want, we want to participate. On February the 10th, we're going to have, as we're hosting the Super Bowl, two nights before the Super Bowl, a number of NFL football players participating, elected officials and, and churches and doing in the beautiful Gammage Auditorium there. And so come join, you can, it's a free event, and we want you to be there, to be able to take that stand with us. If we unite together, we can, we can drive this, this evil, this darkness out of all of the cities. And until that's done, you know, we're not going to be done. So thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for coming up. Councilmember Stewart, Chandler's next.
So I'm going to say, because I think this is something that's so important, I'm going to ask if the vice mayor and the rest of the council members will come up and join us for a photo to show that we're all united on this topic. And if we could have the, have you stand maybe in the middle with Councilmember September with that proclamation open, that would be wonderful. And remember everyone, Not in Our City. Thank you. You should be so proud of being at Gammage this year. Wow. It's exciting. Next, I need to call anybody with our Parks Department to please come down and join me. I know. They are trying to hide. If anybody was here from our Parks and Recreation Board, if they would like to join us also. This evening, we are presenting the Gilbert Parks and Recreation Department, their certificate as they have become certi, a certified autism center. Gilbert Parks and Recreation is committed to providing superior parks, recreation, and cultural programs which exceed customer expectations, enhance the quality of life, and promote lifelong leisure and educational pursuits. These services are provided by a dedicated team focused on fairness, trust, and innovation with a commitment to excellence. The Parks and Recreation Department has recently completed the steps to becoming, to become a certified autism center. The department made a commitment to increase awareness and sensitivity training in areas of autism, ADHD, dyslexia, anxiety, and more. Over 200 employees participated to support the department in achieving the status of a certified autism center, which is provided by the International Board of Credentialing and Continuing Education Standards. This designation furthers the mission of Gilbert to anticipate, create, and help people. In addition to training and education, the town had five sites that were audited for sensory output, including Gilbert Regional Park, Cactus Yards, Repairing at Water Ranch, Free Stone Park, and Free Stone Recreation Center. These sites will have a sensory guide available on the website for visitors to make an educated decision on whether to visit the park based on the sensory needs of their child. We look forward to adding this very important resource to our website. Congratulations to the Gilbert Parks and Recreation Department on the achievement of this incredible certification. Thank you. You're welcome. Congratulations. And you get this beautiful certificate? Really quickly, before you run away, I want you to each introduce yourself and tell us what you do for the Parks Department.
Malon Perisic. I'm the facility managers, manager for the town of Gilbert.
Hi, I'm Kylie Sorenson and I am the Parks Manager.
My name is Lane Graham and I'm the Recreation Manager.
I'm Rocky Brown and I'm the Business Manager.
Renee Carlin and I am the Facility Manager here at the Training Facility.
Amy Nugent, Assistant Facilities Manager.
Robert Carmona, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do and congratulations. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation on the findings of the Gilbert National Business Survey 2022, and I'm inviting Dan Henderson down to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dan Henderson and I serve as the Economic Development Director for Gilbert. We're here tonight to give you a brief overview of the National Business Survey. This is a survey that we conducted in an effort to bring in some feedback from the business community, and just wanted to give you a little overview of, of what the National Business Survey entails. Essentially, this will give us local business feedback as well as an opportunity to learn more about the perceptions and perspectives of the business community. We've got Michael Martella here with us, who serves as a project manager for the department and served as the coordinator for this, for this business survey. Two things I wanted to put into perspective as you're listening to this presentation. First and foremost, the survey participants tended to be business owners and managers with a long history here in, here in Gilbert. And the second is that the Gilbert business owners and managers value the community as a place to live and do business, and a majority feel very positive about the business climate in the town. And so we're delighted to present to you the feedback from the business community that think, Mayor and Council, you're doing an excellent job. With that, I handed over to Mike Martella.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Yentes, council members. It's a pleasure to be up here and to give you just a quick, quick little introduction. The, the presentation's actually going to be handled by our consultants, Polco, who helped administer and execute this survey. So I just wanted to speak for one minute, minute about some of the ways that we'll be able to utilize these results and kind of the long-term impacts of completing the National Business Survey. So a couple of the key benefits of doing something like this is to really help show our businesses that they are valued members of the community, that we care about what they think, and we're committed to making data-driven decisions. The survey will also provide valuable data for strategic planning, resource allocation, and ensuring that we provide the best customer service around. Thinking a little bit more long-term, the town, I know, conducts the National Citizen Survey every other year, and that's something that we could consider for the business community trying to replicate this every other year, to use this statistically valid and confidential survey results to look at benchmarking and kind of monitoring our progress through the years. So it can always be a little nerve-wracking conducting one of these national business surveys for the first time because you really don't know where you're going to end up on the benchmarkings, but I'm really pleased to say that we have a lot of happy businesses here in Gilbert. So it's my pleasure to introduce Jade with Polco. She is going to virtually run through the results in more detail for us tonight.
Good evening. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Before I dive in, I just wanted to briefly mention, I did get a five-minute meeting warning just a couple of minutes ago on the, on Teams meeting that I'm logged in through. So I'm not, if I, if I get booted, my apologies. But hopefully we can extend that. So with that, I will go ahead and just dive into the, the slides that I've prepared tonight. Got about 10 minutes of content to go through. So my name is Jade DeRocha. I am the Director of Survey Research for Polco and National Research Center, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the results of the National Business Survey for Gilbert to you. And Polco and NRC, we have been conducting surveys, the National Community Survey for Gilbert, Gilbert for a number of years now, and this is the inaugural National Business Business Survey for Gilbert. The role of business surveys in local govern, in local governance, primarily for our clients, those tend to be monitoring trends over time in business owners' opinions. Once you've surveyed more than once, you'll be able to establish a trend line to measure government performance as noted by business owners and managers to inform budgeting and strategic planning decisions, and also to be able to see how your ratings stack up to those given in other communities via our benchmark database. The National Business Survey is The National Business Survey is structured around six core indicators of the business environment. These include community amenities, the business climate overall, employment opportunities and workforce supports, workforce readiness, business growth, and governance. And the survey is standardized so that we can provide benchmark comparisons across the board for all of the communities that conduct the NBS. Just a bit about the methodology. So again, first time conducting the National Business Survey here in Gilbert, and the survey was conducted from August 29th, 2022, to September 26th, and then all businesses in the community were invited to participate. We did send a mailing to 4,000 randomly selected businesses within Gilbert out of the roughly 53, 5,400 total businesses in the community. Additional outreach conducted by the town in Gilbert reached those that did not receive a mail contact, but the survey was web-based and hosted on the Polco platform. We received a total of 275 responses for an 8% response rate. That is actually pretty typical for a business survey. Response rates are somewhere in the realm of usually 5% to 15% for business surveys. And then some quick highlights about who responded to the survey. Nearly all of the respondents were business owners or managers. About half have been in Gilbert for 10 years or more. About four in 10 businesses were home-based. About half represented a woman-owned business. Two in 10 represented a minority-owned business. And then nearly seven in 10 of the participating businesses were classified as micro-businesses with nine employees or fewer. Okay, with that, we'll dive into the survey results. So overall, broadly, as you'll see as we go through this presentation, business owners and managers tended to give quite positive ratings of the community as a whole. One of the questions on the survey asked respondents to rate a number of broad characteristics of the community. We can see that ratings for the overall economic health of Gilbert, the overall health of safety, and the overall quality of the utility infrastructure were higher than those given in other communities. Most of these broad aspects were similar to the benchmark comparisons. Quality of the natural environment and opportunities for education, culture, and the arts were lower than average. But when compared broadly to the National Benchmark Database, in Gilbert, we saw 49 of the total aspects for which we could provide benchmark comparisons were higher than that average, which means 10 points or more higher than the average rating. 52 were similar, which means within 10 points of that average rating, and 24 were lower. And I do want to just comment here that we are seeing more of a positive skew toward Gilbert's ratings being higher than benchmark comparisons than we typically see in other communities. Hitting into the key findings, I want to briefly point out, this is what stood out to us as survey researchers as the key findings, but there is a lot of data in this report to review, so we do encourage you to review each of these data points on your own as well. So with that, our first key finding, Gilbert business owners and managers value the community as a place to live and to do business, and a majority feel positively about the business climate in the town. About nine in 10 business owners and managers over more gave excellent or good ratings to the overall quality of life in Gilbert and would recommend Gilbert as a place to live, as a place to do business, and plan to keep their business in Gilbert for the next five years. All of these ratings were higher than the national averages. Key finding number two, survey participants applaud Gilbert as a place to work, but ratings related to workforce, training, opportunities indicate improvement opportunity. So about 93% positively rated Gilbert as a place to work, 82% were pleased with the quality of employment opportunities, three-quarters with the variety of employment opportunities, and about two-thirds gave positive ratings to the availability of jobs that pay a livable wage. These ratings were also higher than the national benchmarks. When evaluating workforce in Gilbert, this was one of the areas that might be identified as a potential area of focus for the town, as we saw ratings for access to higher education institutions, for overall quality of education and training opportunities, and then the variety of education and training opportunities. Those are similar to the national averages. Then ratings for access to trade schools and the affordability of education and training opportunities at 60% and 50% positive, respectively, those were lower than the averages. Key finding number three, Gilbert businesses tend to be pleased with local government performance and on-service delivery. So almost nine in 10 business owners and managers positively rated the overall quality of the services provided by the town, which was higher than the national average. And then looking at other categories of Gilbert performance, about two-thirds gave positive ratings to the overall direction that the Gilbert is taking and the value of services for taxes paid. This rating was higher than the national average. About six in 10 respondents were pleased with the local government generally acting in the best interest of the community, overall confidence in government, and being honest. And business owners were also asked to rate a number of town-provided services. Let's see here, virtually all rated fire services as positive, 92%, garbage collection, and 89% power utility. Both of those were higher than the national averages. And then 88% positive rating on police services as well. These were the highest-rated town services. There were also, there was a section on the survey that reserved custom unique questions in the town, and so this survey included questions related to, the first set of these related to COVID-19 pandemic funding and recovery for these business owners. So eight in 10 respondents reported being aware of business assistance funding or programs available to them since March of 2020. And then looking at the impact of the pandemic on their business, they were asked to indicate how much their business's gross revenue had recovered. And we can see here that only about 16% reported little to no recovery. All other businesses reported somewhere between what we call moderate recovery, somewhere between 10 and 25%. Most business owners were likely to report serious or massive recovery, or even an increase since the beginning of the pandemic. And then respondents were also asked about business assistance funding from any of the sources listed on the right side of the screen here, since March 2020, asked to indicate which they had taken advantage of at that time. 81% reported utilizing the SBA Equal Protection Program. Then we can see in decline corner there, about four in 10 had used the SBA Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, and the Town of Gilbert hashtag Gilbert took a grant. And then about one in 10 had used the IRS Employee Retention Tax Credit, or the Marigold County Relief Grant, or another source. And again, because this was a select all that applied, some business owners or managers used multiple of these sources of funding. Another set of custom questions asked business owners about workforce training and technical assistance that they would like to receive. So out of 13 total items that were listed, business owners were asked to indicate how interested, if at all, they would be in receiving technical assistance in those 13 areas. The top five that rose to the top in terms of those that indicated they were interested, we saw about half business owners or managers being interested in access to funding resources, as well as marketing and branding, or social media training. About four in 10 interested in custom acquisition, and then 35% training online ability issues. And then the turn to the right, there's a question on the survey that asked, were there specific resources, are there specific resources that you need to support or to grow your business? This was another select all that applied question. And so you can see how business owners and managers selected these in descending order as well. Those that are shaded, the lighter blue color, are more related to technical support, just to make those stand out a bit. That is a recap of our conclusions. And I just wanted to briefly point out that you have ongoing access to the Polco platform to be able to post additional content at no additional charge to the town. We are here to support your effort in that. We have entire libraries of questions. If you'd like to push out further questions to the business community. And then the town of Gilbert currently has about 1,000 subscribers currently, so a number of interested parties that would be reached with further survey efforts on the platform. I know there was a lot of content that I covered pretty quickly, but I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Dan, do you have any comments, closing comments?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, Council, just wanted to share this information with you. As always, it's great feedback to hear directly from your business community about how we're doing as a community. We're delighted to share this information with you and let you know that your business community is very pleased with you and the work that we're doing here in the town. Like anything, in terms of surveys and feedback, there's always opportunities for improvement. We'll certainly work with our stakeholders, our different service providers and others to take a look at those in more depth and endeavor down a path to turn those improvements into strength for us. But with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes our overview of the National Business Survey, and thank you for the time.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Jade, for joining us this evening and presenting all that information to us.
Thank you so much.
That concludes this special meeting this evening, so I'll go ahead and adjourn that meeting, and I will roll right into our December 13th, 2022 meeting, calling this meeting to order. The first item of business is the presentation of Student Citizen of the Month Award, and Vice Mayor, it's your last time.
Thank you, Mayor, and hopefully, the last time, I'll just be reading names, and going forward, you guys can
Maybe bring them back.
The previous tradition of having students down to be recognized, because that is really way better than listening to me. But it is my pleasure to announce the names of the Gilbert Student Citizens of the Month, and the recipients were nominated by their teachers and principals for demonstrating good citizenship and character. We appreciate the opportunity to not only recognize these hardworking students, but also to thank all the teachers, school administrators, and their families and parents in the community. We appreciate all your efforts to educate and influence our young residents. Our schools are some of Gilbert's greatest assets. And at this time, we'll power up the slideshow, so you can at least see the children's cute faces. And then for the individuals who are receiving their award tonight, a certificate and a packet is delivered to their school, so they will receive that. And I apologize upfront if I mispronounce anybody's name. I do my best. So we will begin with our elementary school students. Very shortly.